Hope he's ready.
Good evening, welcome to our meeting tonight. Mrs. Logan will you please call the roll?
Sorry.
I apologize.
No problem.
I'm having technical difficulties. Mr. Level.
Here.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Yeah.
Mr. Pearl.
Here.
Mrs. Casper.
Here.
Do you want to do Mrs. Schaefer?
Oh yeah, Mrs. Schaefer.
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer is joining us via Zoom tonight. You join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please have a motion to approve the agenda? Second. Mrs. Logan, you may call the roll.
Mr. Pearl.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Level.
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Casper.
Yes.
I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the employment dismissal and compensation of a public official or employee.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Great, Mrs. Logan will you call the roll.
Mr. Level.
Yes.
Mr. Pearl.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Casper.
Yes.
We will return.
It's easier than getting everybody up.
I agree.
Next on the agenda is board president comments. The only comment that I have is that last May, we passed a resolution during the pandemic about public meeting participation. Just based on what we were required to do by the state, that we would do public participation and zoom our meetings. That resolution is now null and void because once the, in the resolution, it says, once the governor has lifted all of the requirements, then we will go back to our normal procedures. So after tonight, while we are still going to zoom our meeting so that public can watch, there will not be able, public participation via Zoom after this week.
Because the governor listed, lifted the state emergency.
Lifted the state emergency, yes. So we will still allow, because we know that it's good for the public to be able to watch our meetings, but we will not be able to take public comments. There's just no way to verify addresses and names and residents and things like that. So that's all I have. Mr. Miller, are you there?
This is Casper. I'll wait until new business. I have one item that I'll share then.
Okay. This is Logan.
And I will wait until the administrative report to give my comments. So.
Okay. This is the first opportunity for public comments on anything on the agenda. Officer, would you mind grabbing the sheet for me, please? Is there anybody that signed up to speak on anything on the agenda?
If there's not, do you want to leave that thing for the second portion or something?
I think once the, once the meeting starts, is when we were going to pull it.
That's not what I recall from my last meeting.
Well, we haven't passed that anyway, so. So, thank you. Board updates. Mrs. Schaefer, do you have a Butler Tech update?
Yes. We received an update on the building of the Natural Science Center. Construction has begun and that is moving forward well and on budget. They have pulled the old modules, modular units there, and so those will no longer be in use. And then one of the interesting things they've changed, they're in the process of changing their admission process for those who get into the Butler Tech programs. There's been a new ruling with the EOC that says that you have to prove with Career Tech Centers that there is no discrimination in your programs in your admission process. And many Career Tech Centers use a interview process, and they have been advised to stop using that interview process. So typically right now, basically the two primary criteria to get into Butler Tech are making sure you're not more than three hours credit deficient, because it's hard to make up more than that three hours. And then doing an interview process to basically highlight your passion for the program. And so they're looking at doing away with that and going more towards a lottery program to get into the programs where there's not enough space, which are many of the programs at Butler Tech. So they're currently reworking that and redoing that, but that is the direction they're thinking that they're going to have to go based on this new ruling and new advice that they're receiving. So that's my update.
Any questions for Mrs. Schaefer? Policy, Mr. Lovell?
We just have our second reads this evening.
We have, we're going to take policy, what is it, 169.1, and pull it from the approval, because it's got some language we need to fix.
Okay.
It says like 30 minutes per public comment, and it's 30 minutes per public comment section.
Right.
Not just a total of 30 minutes.
That's fine.
And we were also going to change the fact that we were going to let people sign in right up until the beginning of the second public comment. As opposed to at the beginning of the meeting. I think we talked about that in depth at the last meeting.
It, what does it say in that policy? Did you?
It says at the beginning of the meeting.
That's in 169.1?
Yes.
Okay. We will talk, we will send that back.
Send, send C.
We'll send that back to the policy committee and talk to Mr. Goldman.
And I have a couple more to pull as well, if you'd like to discuss those now.
Okay.
So 169.1 was one of my concerns as well for those two reasons. I had also asked 165.2, and I don't know that the policy committee has met since our last meeting, so they may not have had a chance to do so. I had asked on 165.2 if we could also add a line to that that ensures that all five board members, as much as is possible, be present at special meetings.
Okay.
And then the last one was 1662, 3362, and 4362. And I'd asked that the policy committee take a look at the wording under the prohibited acts and consider maybe some redraft on that if possible.
Which one is that? When the?
1662, 3362, and 4362. And Brad, if you can read my writing, I'll give you those notes.
That's fine. Do you just want to send them an email? And that way we can, if you want to keep them, just send them an email, because we're not, I don't have in front of me our next meeting date, but we can review them then at that point.
All right.
It's the first Friday.
It is. Yes. Because we're not doing July, correct? That's what I was in my head trying to, yep. So it'll be, it'll be the first Friday in August.
So we can vote on the balance of the policies and just pull those?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
And there's nothing time sensitive.
Right.
Related to.
Okay. Legislative update, Mr. Miller, this is Logan.
I think just the big news is the budget bill.
It's done?
They're voting on it tonight in both houses, but the conference committee has completed their work. And it does look like they'll be including the school, the fair school funding formula.
It is included. That is the school.
But it also, but they were only doing it for two years. So only until the next biennium budget.
So we had proposed a six-year phase in, and it looks like they moved away from a six-year. But there's still many, many, you know, the devil is in the details. So there's many, many things that we're still learning and it's unfolding. But a huge move forward to know that we actually have a school funding formula that will be included in this next biennium that actually makes sense.
But there's no models or anything like that.
They're working on, LSC is working on that, and we should be getting that momentarily.
Okay.
Everything has to be finalized by the 30th, so.
Yes, nothing like down to the wire.
Yeah, they're, they're voting, the word is that they are voting tonight to get it done, so.
I, I got notice since I'm not there that they just passed it, actually.
There you go.
Late breaking news.
I, I, I knew it would happen while we're sitting.
Ohio House and Senate approved House Bill 110.
That's fantastic.
All your hard work, Jenny.
I was in the details, but that's fantastic.
The person farthest away from the meeting found out.
It's because she's checking her phone and nobody's watching her.
That's awesome, Jenny. Congratulations. That's a lot of hard work for you and your team.
You did so much to get that passed. Thank you.
Well, appreciate that. And we're going to celebrate officially on the 30th with the speaker and his wife and Patterson and his wife, and it's just going to be a nice, it'll be a nice celebration.
Yes, after three years of hard work.
Well, I know we've said this before, and we just mentioned it, but kudos to you, because you've been on that committee for how many years now?
Like three and a half years.
So we're fortunate as a district to have you having a voice at the state level to really advocating for, you know, it's been 25, 30 years since our state funding has been proven unconstitutional. And so having a voice that's advocating for the district, but also equity among the state is huge. So thank you.
You're welcome.
It's great.
Yeah, it doesn't happen without you. You won't say that, but it doesn't.
More to come.
Do you have other legislative updates?
That's big.
Another piece of the bill was that the individual amounts allowed for vouchers have gone up as well for elementary and high school. Sorry, the voucher amounts have been increased, I believe. I have to check it in the final, but I think so.
There were some things from the Senate, and they increased a lot of the voucher information. Some of the modifications did not make it through, so we don't know exactly.
So we'll be checking that, but I thought I saw that adapt.
Yes, some did get through.
OSBA, as you know from our last meeting, had appointed a new president, and we just had a meeting a few days ago when they've appointed a new president-elect as well, Susie Lawson. I've worked with her on the Federal Relations Network, great person. I think she'll do a great job in leadership there. I have an OSBA Board of Trustees meeting July 19th, and there was a Southwest Regional Executive Committee meeting the first part of August. So I'll be reporting back on those once that happens.
Where's, where's, if I can ask, where's Ms. Lawson from? Is she from this area?
She's from up north.
Okay.
It's not in my head right at the moment.
And she's president-elect?
Right. She's president-elect for the rest of this school year.
Gotcha. Thank you.
The rest of this calendar year, and then they'll appoint somebody for next year if she's not the president, so.
Thank you.
That's it. Okay. What's administrative report?
Okay, so just like the budget, it's down to the wire with that. It's the end of our fiscal year as well. So June 30th is when we finalize our books, and July 1 is, is our new year for the school district. So on the agenda tonight, there are a few items requesting approval. One of them is an amended certificate. That basically sets up the guardrails. It shows what our beginning cash was, our estimated revenue, and then shows you a balance that can be appropriated, can be budgeted to be spent. And so we do a final amended certificate at the end of the year, just kind of updating those revenue projections. And we'll file that with the county auditor. Final appropriations for this fiscal year as well. And just a reminder, we do appropriate in this district by fund and object. So I think sometimes when you look at our appropriation resolution, while it is lengthy, it does not show every line item, because you appropriate at the fund and object level. And then temporary appropriations for fiscal year '22 are on the agenda, and we will finalize appropriations by the end of September. So you adopt temporaries before July 1, and then you will finalize those and adopt permanent appropriations in the month of September. There are also fund-to-fund transfers on the agenda. The 009 fund is our fund that represents basically student fees. And so there are some cash balances in the building funds, and we, at the end of every year, we basically sweep those to one overarching fund. And so that's what you see there with the 009 funds. Then you're going to see some transfers from the general fund to our club card accounts. So you see those that represented as 200 funds. And then at the end of every year, our senior class, as they graduate, any remaining cash in their student accounts, that senior class fund, we move those to the upcoming senior account. So those are the fund-to-fund transfers. And then the biggest one, as far as fund-to-fund transfer, is the general fund transfer to our extracurricular funds. So our athletic funds, our band funds, and what is that last one? The, oh, band and winter guard. So that's your athletic, your extracurricular funds. I do want to say that the transfer for your extracurriculars this year is down from last year. And the reason that it's down is because we base this transfer on the number of participants. And our number of participants this year was down by almost 500 students. Matt and I looked at this before the meeting, and it's roughly about 12 to 13% less students participated in your extracurriculars this year. So that transfer is less, and that's the basic reason. Items to note for fiscal year '21, we did end the year better than we expected. If you recall, when we had this same meeting last year, we were not sure what state cuts were going to look like. We weren't sure what COVID expenditures were going to, we just really, there was a whole lot of things we weren't sure about. Our revenue ended up being $4 million better than what we thought it was going to be, what we predicted in November. That's basically because taxes were better. We had gone through a revaluation. We weren't sure what that was going to look like. And then state funding. We had, we had estimated and anticipated that we would see a 10% cut, and we actually, some of those cuts were actually restored. It was much better. So we still got a cut. I just want to say, still got a cut, but it was better than we expected. And our expenditures were 2 million less than we anticipated in November, and they were within a half a percent of what we anticipated our May, in our May prediction. Our revenues, what we predicted in May with our revenues, we were 0.16% within that estimate. So pretty, pretty close. At the end of this year, our cash balance grows by another 4.2 million. And then if you recall, you have the policy that says that if you end the year with online 6010, where your revenues are more than your expenditures on the five-year forecast, then you take half of that and you move it into the rainy day fund. So basically, in July, August, I'll be coming to you in August and asking you to approve that transfer. So your rainy day fund would grow by $2.1 million, taking it up to over $7 million. So, so that's something to highlight as well. We hear a lot about our SRR money, the money coming from the federal government. We did spend our SRR1 allocation in this fiscal year, and that was 1. almost 4 million. And we spent 1.5 million of our SRR2 funds. So we have roughly $15.8 million left in SRR funds. And remember, I said, when we meet again, well, in August, we're going to, we're going to revise our five-year forecast now based on, we've got more information. So we'll be doing that. Then in September, we'll finalize our appropriation. So we're going to continue to talk about SRR, but I wanted you to have that piece of information. And then, like I mentioned, our next steps will be to review and update the forecast in August. And then in September, we will review and adopt permanent appropriations. But from a financial standpoint, we ended the fiscal year in a very strong financial way. So I have no negative news to give you at this time on that front. Questions? So I have no negative news to um, give you at this time on that front. Questions?
A general question, sure. Um, what is the purpose rhetorical question maybe, right? But I just think it's something that we as a board should talk about. What is the purpose of a rainy day fund? Cause how mu- our cash balance right now is a hundred and thirteen point nine million dollars, which includes the seven million rainy day fund. What, what, why, why is it that we are taking taxpayer dollars and putting into this rainy day fund each year?
So the rainy day fund is just like the state has it set up for if a rainy day comes. If something happens and you need to reserve funds um, to help you get through a tough time. So it is there to set aside in case something catastrophic happens to the district. Um, and it would help you through that time.
And a hundred, a hundred and thirteen point nine million dollars is roughly seven months cash on hand.
Correct.
And the state minimum is ninety days.
Ninety days.
I, I just bring that up because um, I think there's always a balance of being fiscally responsible with our taxpayer funds, but also making sure that the funds that we're collecting from our taxpayers is used for student opportunities and experiences as well. Um, and I know our five-year forecast, we have deficit spending in year four and five, but we're also ending this year. And like you said, a really strong um, fiscal state. And so I, I just bring up that point because again, I, I have no um, you know, I, I don't, I, I have no, I don't know, I don't know what the word is. I don't want to be just stockpiling cash. There's a certain point as a taxpayer, I would say, why, why am I giving you money and you're just putting into a rainy day fund? When maybe there's other opportunities we could be investing in, understanding that the mechanism for our school system to get money is to go to the voters eventually to ask them. And part of that's a check and balance on, do you approve of what we're doing and how we're spending our money? So I'm not saying right now that we need to go for a levy. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying we have a hundred and thirteen point nine million dollars in account. We just transferred in there a couple million into a rainy day fund. We're coming off of a pandemic, which I would associate as a hurricane. Um, so I just leave it there for the board. I'm not really looking for a discussion. I, maybe it's just a point that I just wanted to make sure that was out on the table.
Anybody else have questions for Mrs. Logan? I don't have a question, but I would like to make a comment. I think it's important to remember as we're looking at that hundred and thirteen million dollar reserve, as I talked about in the May five-year forecast meeting, that there are several issues facing us that are not included in the five-year forecast. Kindergarten class size being adjusted lower, which was part of our negotiations discussion with our union, secondary schedule changes, multi-tiered support system intervention work that we know is going to be used to address student loss of learning through the pandemic. There's a two hundred and six million dollar facilities plan and possibly other issues going into that as well. We have no idea what that impact will be on the general budget. And we have to have further discussion needed on staffing for next year. Part of our contract actually um, did take away or added a planning time during the day, which is going to require additional staffing to cover students during that time. So I think there, when we talk about stockpiling, there are so many things that have not been addressed yet that still need to be addressed, that I'm thankful that we're seeing a positive impact to this budget. And I still believe we have a question to address in our five-year forecast and look at deficit spending, which is not a sound business practice. So appreciate the perspective, but wanted to offer that one as well.
Yeah.
I do actually have a question.
Can I interject really, just really quick? And I just, I agree. I just, I, I think that my generalized question is, how much money do we continue to stockpile? You know, I mean, how much money is enough? Is it eight months? Is it nine months? Is it ten months? Is it eleven? Is it twelve? What point do we say, gosh, man, we've just, we've set aside so much cash? Because I guess we can always sit in a spot and say, there could be an impact here. There could be an impact. There could be an impact. And you live in that cycle and we live in that reality and every year is different. And we know S R funds are going to take care of a lot of the things that you're mentioning, which are federal funds. So I just laid it on table because I just, for me, I want to understand, at what point do we stop growing that cash balance?
And, and we did talk about that in the, our finance committee um, prior to the pandemic. I feel like everything is either pre or post, right? Um, but we started that conversation where um, we threw out that question, like what, you know, we know what our target is to like our floor, like we should have ninety days cash. But what is that ceiling? Like, when do we get to a point where, okay, if we get beyond this number of days cash, and we did do some policy work and it had to do with, once it, I would have to go back to the policy because it's been a while. But we did put some language in there that said, once it goes beyond X number of days, the superintendent can bring forward to the Board of Education. Um, and it has to be in conjunction with the strategic plan to spend some of those excess dollars. I would have to go back to the policy.
Sure.
But it is a question that we have asked ourselves because, you know, you shouldn't just look at like, what's the floor that you don't want to fall below, but what is that ceiling?
Right.
To make sure that you are doing right by the students and to make sure that what you are doing is sustainable and all of those pieces. But we did, we did talk about that in finance before.
Okay.
Yeah, and frankly, once needs have been addressed, maybe we'll look at returning extra dollars to the taxpayers if we actually feel like that's the situation that we have extra dollars in the budget.
Sure.
It's always an option.
So Matt, I, Matt and Jenny both, I had a question around the athletic budget. And five hundred students less participating is, that's a big number.
Not just athletics.
That's clubs. I'm sorry, extracurriculars.
So, and that's seven twelve.
Yes. Believe that the restrictions that were put into place regarding some of those activities.
I have, I have to believe that one. Jenny mentioned before that we were talking about that earlier today. So um, we were talking about five hundred. What does that look like? That's about, what, and I'm rounding. About thirty-eight hundred fifty participants down to thirty-three fifty uh, in terms of numbers. So, she got them right there. Thanks. That's good. That's close. Um, but I do have to believe that part of that's gotta be pandemic-related in one way or another. Um, in terms of participation and things that we had going on or not have, have going on. So we have to, we talked about this earlier today. I have to have a sort of a re-emphasis on what does Lakota offer for our kids in all areas. Uh, if you're going into eighth grade, you haven't been in your building yet, maybe because you're maybe a VLO student. So there's a whole um, group of kids that, you know, when you're doing VLO, you might not be participating in other things as well. You could, but not always. So we sort of have to have sort of a re, branding is not the right word, but um,
Communications.
Yeah, yeah, about, these are the things that we can do and here's what we're able to do now. So.
Are we thinking about that at the end of the summer before kids come?
Yeah, I mean, we were talking about it earlier today, but yeah. And um, I think Mr. Level's point too, we have the strategic plan that's coming up for uh, modifications and renewals. So I think the right, I think the timing's good because it feels like things are getting better. Uh, I don't want to say post-pandemic yet, but we're crawling out of it. And so I think.
It'll be better when we stop saying pandemic period.
I know.
Amen.
Wouldn't that, I'm sorry, wouldn't that have accounted for all of the spring sports that were canceled in those numbers?
I, I don't have by sport, Julie. I, I only have it by building. But if we dig into it, that could be, that could be the case. I'm not sure.
Cause we started some sports.
Right.
Yeah, and so I would have to, I know they refunded the money for spring sports, at least for my students. So I have to believe that that would have an impact on those numbers, which makes me wonder if they were actually even up in some other areas, given that it was only five hundred if we refunded spring sports.
If you look at something like band, they, they went down a lot. I mean, pretty significant. And, and those gentlemen can talk about that more than I can. Um, but we also have like, looking at a column of twenty nineteen versus twenty twenty versus twenty twenty-one. So it's not just, you know.
It just wasn't, yeah, last year. Any other questions for Jenny? Um, new business. Do we have any new business?
I, I, I do if that's okay, if I can. Anyone else, anyone else has anything? Uh, really just an announcement um, for Lakota schools, um, that masks and face coverings are gonna be optional uh, for students and staff this fall. Um, we did not make this decision lightly. Um, included um, all the state protocols, conversations with UC Health again and with children's. Um, and we're also following the Ohio Department of Health guidelines. And so um, we would recommend that those that are not vaccinated consider wearing a mask, but we are not gonna require them this fall.
Thank you for that.
Any questions?
Always subject to change based on.
Right.
The numbers. Current events.
Current events.
I think it's good we're announcing it now so families can plan.
Yep.
Plan ahead. Okay, uh, board action. We need a motion to approve the second read of the policies with the exception of the ones that we have pulled out.
Jenny, did you write all this down?
I'll make that motion and also include the tabling of sixteen sixty-two, thirty-three sixty-two, forty-three sixty-two, one sixty-nine point one, one sixty-five point two.
Do I have a second?
Second. Okay.
Mrs. Logan, would you please call the roll when you're ready?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
We need a motion to approve superintendent recommendations.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Logan, will you please call the roll? Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes. We've come to the second portion for.
You missed the treasures.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I appreciate you going first.
I know, you never get to go first. I'm so sorry. I missed that. I need a motion for the treasurer's recommendations.
So moved.
A through E, second?
Second.
Now, Mrs. Logan will recommend, approve your recommendations.
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Thank you.
My screen is very light. Keep missing things today. Need to turn the brightness up. Now we've reached the second part of our public comments. As a reminder, um, you must be a resident. You need to state your name and address, please. And there's been some discussion on the three-minute rule. And I just want to reiterate that three minutes is what we've, the reason we have a policy with three minutes is so that everybody that wants to speak gets an opportunity to speak. And so it's why when you come to the end of your three minutes, we ask you to stop speaking. If we let people just continue to speak, we don't think it would be fair to not let everybody that wants to speak in that thirty-minute time window speak. So I just wanted to clear that up. And Hunter Oswald, Mr. Oswald, you are first on my list.
Um, Hunter Oswald, uh, four nine four seven, Streamside Court Liberty Township. I'm here tonight to address the, to address concerns over the development and physical handing, handling of the innovation hubs in Lakota School District. At the June fourteenth meeting, there was a ton of discussion over the consideration of having Turner Construction's bid for two hundred seventeen thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars to do renovations at the um, innovation hubs at both Lakota East and West High Main Campus. One of the things that gave me concern is that the three-page document sent by Chris Passard um, to Matt Miller on June ninth, twenty twenty-one, is that it does not state what the specifics are on, how and what the renovations will look like, or what they even are. These are, this is deeply problematic since it provides no clear intention in how taxpayer dollars will be spent and how will, and what will be expected in the end of the renovations. Mrs. O'Connor stated that the board should wait on signing any contracts with any construction company until all the information regarding the renovations is fully complete. Mr. Level, in his contentious reply, stated that this should not be an issue as it is not a governance position, but a management position since the budget was approved and was part of the strategic plan. This is very much a governance position since all contracts and financial decisions are made by the school boards through the district's budget and all contracts are signed by Lakota School Board. This rush to signing any contracts is contrary to being physically, physically responsible with taxpayer dollars and shows a lack of transparency between this school board's financial decisions and what taxpayer dollars are being spent on. Knowing that there is going to be hard times coming through current economic trends, the taxpayers cannot take any financial risk from loose financial decisions of the school board. According to my parents' financial advisor, US Department of Labor, US or, uh, not Board, US Bureau of Labor Statistics, and numerous economists, they are now warning people to save right now as a result to the current inflation crisis, which the inflation rate from April to May increased by five percent, which is the highest inflation rate increase since the two thousand eight housing collapse. This trend has caused massive panic over the financial stability of the US financial markets as well as the overall impact on our economy. The board must take the initiative now to reduce current unnecessary costs and ensure that we can and save enough financial assets and taxpayer dollars so that the schools can function when hard times come and become fully committed to physical thriftiness. I encourage the board to adhere to Mrs. O'Connor's words and waiting, and wait on signing any contracts before all information is submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Just for the ladies in the back three row, I'm watching Mr. Zane. He gives me the time when the three minutes is up. So I just, I know it looks odd that I'm like I'm staring at you every five minutes. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that. Um, Mrs., I'm sorry, is it Choss? Thank you. I'm terrible at reading handwriting.
My name is Karen and I live on Foxwell Drive. I'm French Canadian and moved to this country fifteen years ago to my father's career. I have also attended international schools in Singapore for three years and study alongside Asians, African-American, Indians, Europeans, students from all over the world. Thankfully, we were never taught to judge each other because of, of our culture or the color of our skins. We were there to learn and make friends. As we are all aware, critical race theory has alarmed and attempted to divide communities all over the country. Many pla- places are banning it, calling it divisive, ineffective and harmful. Lakota needs to recognize that this is in their schools as well, but call, but called cultural responsive teaching or LODI. But it is all the same racially divisive curriculum. If, if it's not being implemented as you have said, then why have you employed three directors of inclusion, paying at least one of them six figures, some of them having very divisive narratives on their Twitter accounts? Do you yourself believe in this divisive curriculum? Or is there money at the end? If not, why are you pushing this on our children? You keep repeating, we do not teach CRT and pride yourselves on being transparent. If that's the case, I want to see all the presentations and trainings your teachers have to sit through. I want to see every PowerPoint survey and video that they have to see. I want to see what materials the students are being shown. I want to know what consultants you have hired to come in and speak for bias training and how much of all this costs us in addition to the three salaries mentioned above. Have you done any research before you let this curriculum in our schools? Are you monitoring how something so divisive is being delivered and received by students? Seems to me that a course that is so controversial would warrant a permission slip with a thorough and accurate description of the course so a parent can decide what's best for their child or family. My son had to sit through gender equality, telling him that most parents are homophobes and most Christians are not accepting of homosexuality. You have no idea my faith, my beliefs, or um, if my son was emotionally ready for these conversations. How many medical, medical professionals for children such as psychologists or psych- psychiatrists, psych- whatever, did you consult to see when children can critically think through this type of curriculum? Or did you just consult politicians? A teacher's job is to educate our children with math, science, language arts and social studies. They did not become teachers to indoctrinate our children and turn them into activists. We as parents cannot, um, we as parents can direct our moral compass as we know our kids better and can decide when, when they are ready for these types of conversations. You are not smarter than us. You do not know what is best for our kids. Who awarded you the power to make these calls and go with it? To help you get started with your research, just check out one of your Directors of Inclusion's Twitter page and see the title of the articles for yourselves. For example, Dear White Teacher, or Five Phrases Your Black Friends Didn't Want to Hear. Tell me how this is not divisive. I've also found interesting hashtags on the Director of Inclusion's Twitter page, hashtag CRT cohort. I can offer you other screenshots of other coordinators if any, if any of you or any of the members of your community would like them. Thank you for your time. Thank you. This is Marfeta.
Good evening. Karen Marfeta, Hunters Ridge Drive, Westchester. As parents and community members, sometimes we come to our local school board with deep and serious concerns for our children. And we expect that our concerns are taken seriously by the people we elect to serve on our school boards. I was unable to attend the last board meeting, so I watched it online and I was disgusted by the closing comments of some of the people on this board. The blatant lying, dismissive attitude and words and the condescending behavior and comments show us that you need to be replaced with board members who treat the parents and community members with respect and you take our concerns for our children's. show us that you need to be replaced with board members who treat the parents and community members with respect and who take our concerns for our children seriously. You say you don't teach critical race theory here in Lakota. We all know that is not what you call it, so therefore it's easy for it to ignore it. Let's try this instead. Hashtag CRT cohort. You call it culturally responsible teaching. The goals of culturally responsible teaching involves ways of educating students based on principles of social justice, seeks to stray from traditional teaching of the white Western world, promotes equity and inclusivity, and emphasizes the LGBTQ community. The premise and content of culturally responsive teaching is exactly the premise and content of critical race theory. Many of the Lakota teachers, Lakota Senior Director of Outreach Diversity and Inclusion, Lakota's diversity practitioner, have been posting hashtag CRT cohort in an endless amount of posts and tweets since two thousand nineteen. Are you all going to deny that as well? You say no one has given you examples to look at. I personally have shown you assignments and videos from my son's Lakota laptop. You have dismissed it all. Karen's son sat in the same class as my son and learned the same things as him. Students have told you what they're being taught and you still choose to lie to the parents and community. Mrs. Schaefer says sometimes narratives get created. We didn't create the lessons or assignments. Lakota did. It's a fact, not a narrative. My son is, as well, is going into the ninth grade, and he knows the sexual preference of some of his teachers and the political views they have. Most students know this because this is what is predominantly talked about in the classrooms for a long time now. Apparently, school board members' childrens are immune from this. The cackling and acting as if she has no idea what's going on is a direct insult to us as parents. Mr. Lovell's rants are boring, self-absorbed, and some of the most shallow and intimacy awards I have ever heard. Mrs. Casper said last week, we teach seventeen thousand kids and every single one of them is important to us. How important is my child and the children that this divisive racist and hateful teaching is affected in negative ways? There are only one out of the five board members who sit here who treat the parents and community members with dignity and respect regardless of whether or not she agrees with what we have to say. So thank you, Mrs. O'Connor. I hope you know how much we appreciate the sincerity and respect you show the concerns that we have for our children.
Thank you. Mrs. Wells? No? Okay. Um, Ms. McCall?
Hello. Guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. While I'm a parent in the district
And can you state your, um, address, please?
Oh, my name is Regina McCall and I live on, at six seven five eight Great Bridge. No, thank you. Okay. So as a parent in the district, everybody knows what's going on and there's things you can't talk about, but some of us wanted to know because of the way the situation was handled as far as the principal at Lakota East. The other thing I wanted to address here is that I hear people talking about critical race theory, which I don't think is taught in schools as is done, and I work in a school district. However, this is my opinion. It can be taken or left there. Critical race theory, whether it's talking, is being taught in schools or not, there is an issue where there is a minority, the minorities within the school district, African American, Asian, however you want to look at it. I'm speaking for my culture. Phil, we are at a disadvantage in not being treated or taught the education we need to as those things are coming into the district, there is opposition to those things being taught, but they do need to be taught appropriately and honestly. So I feel like as time goes on, either you're going to have to face this head-on and everybody come to what it is going to be, or it's going to turn into a battle that no one's going to like with one side opposing the other side, and you're never going to come to that common ground. As someone who's had my kid in the schools and people talk about this, my kid was in the district, and I will say he's not in the district for multiple reasons now, but he's coming back, was in a district, and they did a whole history on where your people come from, what country they come from. I don't have that. So imagine how humiliating that is for a first grader to be asked to bring in their whole history. Our country is not based on that history. So to go to school, and there's a lot of people who deal with that, there is no history to bring. I don't know if they're still doing that project. But I want people to see it from the side of pain from the kids and not from our own personal too. My child was traumatized by that and should have been taught how that is presented and not just shamed because that was the truth. So how, however you want to look at it, this needs to be faced head-on. Whether it's critical race theory, teaching history, talking about the differences between people, talking about the commonalities between people, it has to be done. Someone's going to be at the top, someone's going to be at the bottom, and if you go through history. I'm not saying anybody needs to be it on that scale, however it wants to be, but it needs to be honest and it needs to be true. And the kids know that. Or else this is going to get worse. It's not going to get better. I'm done.
Thank you. Mrs. Dyson?
Hello, my name is Karen Dyson and I live in four seven zero eight Guilford Lane. I've been a resident of the Lakota District for eleven years and a resident of Cincinnati for more than twenty-four years. I came here prepared to appeal to you to request that you consider the reinstatement of Dr. Yajita Mack. And more importantly, I wanted to raise a concern of how it was handled or the lack of information that was shared. And I say that because when Dr. Mackey was appointed, the black community really celebrated. We celebrated. We thought it was a huge turning point for our community to have someone in that leadership role that our black children could see as a role model. And we had hoped that the culture within the school system would then have a chance to be able to allow young black kids to come to school and be in an environment where they felt they could be themselves. That is still my request. But after sitting here and listening to some of the comments, I think it raises an even bigger reason why we need a Dr. Yajita Mack in the school system. I work with Procter and Gamble, and I've lived all over the world. I lived in China, I lived in Brazil, I lived in Malaysia. And what I can tell you is when I lived in China, I went to China with the baggage of growing up in Mobile, Alabama. You can't get more southern than that. Well, I guess you could. I took all of that baggage with me. What I realized shortly after being there is I didn't need that baggage because they didn't have the history of slavery and racism against black people. I didn't want to come back. That's a really weird feeling, not wanting to come back to the country that you call home. But what I, I say that because what I've realized is that it takes a lot of, for us to undo what has happened over a hundred years. And it really takes bringing people in to be able to rewrite, recreate, really change that, that, that culture and that experience. People are afraid. I understand fear, but we can't continue to allow fear to disrupt the generation that's coming ahead. They're our future. And if we have any chance of ending racism, sexism, and just fear of, of, of people who are gay, then we're going to have to bring that into our classrooms. I hope you guys have the courage to stand strong against fear. And my request to you is to reinstate Dr. Yajita Mack so that she has a part, she has an opportunity to do her part. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs., is it Wickerson? Wickerson?
Hello, board. I'm Dr. Rwanda Wickerson. I reside at seven two seven four Fox Chase Drive here in Westchester. I
Just a little bit, yes.
Sure. No problem. I've been a resident of Butler County for almost eighteen years. I have two kids in the Lakota School District. I have thus far been pleased with their education. I do want to say and reiterate what Ms. Dyson just expressed. Dr. Yajita Mack has been unfairly reassigned and let go of her position at Lakota East very publicly. And I believe the school board owes it to the district, the parents of kids in the district, to explain what has actually happened. And if that cannot be done, a public apology should be provided and she be reinstated. It was made public that she was going to be reassigned. It was made public that she was asked to be placed on leave. The rationale was not provided, and that is not sufficient. I too work at Procter and Gamble. And when things are handled in this manner, I'm sorry, things are not handled in this manner. When there is a problem with an employee, as you very well know, you have to be consistent with how the situations are handled. This has not been handled as it has been consistently before. This action is very inconsistent. And so if you're going to publicly reassign someone, publicly state that there is an investigation, the rationale to what that investigation is should also be publicly stated. I come to you as a very concerned parent. I'm concerned about the comments here tonight. I'm very, very, very deeply bothered by some of the comments tonight. I agree with Mrs. Dyson that having someone like Dr. Yajita Mack, who can lead, who can share her perspective as a leader, as well as bring in greater diversity into the school district is so very important because this world is not a monolith of people. And because of that, we owe it to our students, our children, my children growing up in this district, who came to me and also said, Mom, I have a history report. And I am also supposed to talk about where my people are from. Let's help our students understand that this world is diverse. And so when they get jobs at very public companies like Procter and Gamble, it won't come to them as a shock. They can go to places like Japan as I've traveled, like Singapore, and work with other people because they understand that this world is diverse.
Thank you. Land? Land?
Good evening, everybody. Anya Land, six five oh two Redmont Court. I come to you today because I am a newer family in this community. We moved here maybe five years ago. And I've witnessed firsthand the number of changes that each of you, even you, Mr. Miller, to the board, the change that you've made from changing the boundaries throughout the district, changing gifted services for Ms. Schaefer on the line, changing a lot of things, especially during COVID. I know that the district leadership requires a certain level of change management to manage the things that we experience in our community. And it's evident that throughout all the change that you've instituted, the safety and security of our students has been at the utmost highest priority of your agenda. And as a parent, I appreciate that. We've changed three different schools from Wyandotte to Liberty to now Van Gordon, and we've had some amazing principals who really get it. They see my son for who he is and they support him through all of his crazy changes. There were times, I'll be honest, there were times during COVID when I really did question if the decisions that you were making were the right ones. And it's not because I didn't think that you, they were well thought out. But I vividly remember seeing the COVID rates rise across the nation and then seeing our county move from orange to red to purple. And then day after day, as a parent, we would get the messages from our school principals. Today, we were informed that one of our students has tested positive for the Nobel, Nobel Coronavirus COVID-19. The only way that I was able to get through that is because I knew that the decisions that were made were there because you had the the forethought to think about the students, the families, the teachers, and the employees who depended on your leadership, and we still do depend on your leadership. Mr. Miller and members of the board, each of you have really taken a part in the decisions and how you've prioritized health and safety for families across this district. And that's really brought us together through this pandemic, or the panda bear, as we call it in my family. As a parent, I must assume that the decisions that you were making were made after careful consideration while attempting to balance your viewpoints and the viewpoints represented by students, families, teachers, and employees. And I knew that you were doing it because you believe in our students. It's deeply concerning. I've felt the need to send you all an email and come to this board meeting today because of the untimely removal of Dr. Yajita Mack as principal at Lakota East High School. As an administrator and a leader in this district, each of you have been tasked with making monumental decisions from our, our finances to where we invest our money for infrastructure, building new buildings.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
And I encourage you to remember what Lakota means, which is unity and allyship.
Thank you.
Because we need an ally.
Time is up. I'm sorry.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Wucker? Is that correct?
It is. And I'll, before I go to my role, I'll just tell you that I'm not here as a resident of, of the parent.
Unfortunately, if you're not a resident of the district, our policy states that you cannot speak, so I apologize. Mrs. Logan?
I'm not here in my meeting.
Right. Unfortunately, we did, we did just run into this a couple meetings ago. And your policy right now says that if you're a, a resident or a business owner, I believe, are the only ways that we can allow you to speak. So I apologize, but we have to follow our policy. Thank you. Encourage him to send something to Yes, you absolutely are free to email the board. If you go onto the website, there's one button you can press that says email the whole board, and so we'll all get that. I'd like to hear the comments. Did you, is that what you wanted to say? Okay, sorry. Is there anybody else that I missed? Is there anybody on Zoom, Mr. Zink? Mr. Frazier?
Hello. Good, good afternoon. Can you all hear me?
Yes. Could you just please state your name and your address?
My name is Leland Frazier. My address is seven two eight one Keltner Drive, Westchester, Ohio.
Great. What can we do for you?
Okay, so I, you know, this is very important to me. I'm actually calling in from my vacation from California, so please forgive me if you hear any background noise. I'm calling in regards to the removal of Dr. Yajita Mack as the principal of Lakota East High School. I sent, you know, myself and a couple of my colleagues sent letters to you all regarding how this was handled, and we are specifically requesting the reinstatement of Dr. Mack into her role. Dr. Mack is, you know, I'm very disturbed by the comments I've heard on this call today. You know, as I think about Dr. Mack, her track record in the Cincinnati area, the work that she did in Sycamore, the fact that she was removed from her, from her role, and, and the optics of the situation, she was removed from her role right after there was a quote-unquote controversy regarding caps and gowns in the Lakota School District, right? And so, you know, I am very disturbed around how this was handled, especially with Dr. Mack being the first black female principal of Lakota East in the district, right, for Lakota East High School. And so I'm specifically requesting that she be reinstated. You know, I sent some communication via email. And I want to make sure that you all understand, you know, we are the, the multicultural community in Lakota School District. We need Dr. Mack. Our students need to see someone that looks like them in positions of influence. And the optics of this situation clearly send the wrong message. The comments that I've heard today on the call further, further tell me exactly what happened and what's, what's going on in terms of why she was pulled from her role. And so I need the Lakota School District to understand this is not going to end today. There are about five people on this call who are very clear in terms of what's needed and how this was handled. And I want to make sure you all understand the black community, the multicultural community is very upset. We need action. We need justice for Dr. Mack. And if this is not handled correctly, further action will take place. And so I want to make sure we're very clear on that. And that is all I have to say. My name is Leland Frazier, seven two eight one Keltner Drive. My name is Leland Frazier, 7281 Keltner Drive, Westchester, Ohio. And we need justice for Dr. Mack. This is not okay.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Mr. Zink, anyone else? Okay, great. Do you want to start with the innovation hub?
I did send some further information to the board about the innovation hub, just to follow up, just so you know, Mr. Oswald, I want to let you know that. And then in terms of the other comments, unfortunately, we can't comment on personnel issues that are ongoing. So I'm just going to say that on behalf of myself, but also the board in regards to some of our speakers tonight. And then in terms of, you know, and there's some crisscrossing here on some things, but in terms of, I think, people's, you know, conversations about race and critical race theory and what's happening or not happening in Lakota, and I think that gets also mirrored in communities all across the country, quite honestly, right now with everything that's going on. I think it lends itself, at least from our lens and perspective, that there needs to be more conversation about what is happening and what's not happening and just some common understanding. And clearly, that's not happening now. So I will work on that. My team will work on that in terms of what our next steps would be. But clearly, that we need to have more conversation about that collectively and not in silos.
On both sides of the issue.
Correct. Yeah, there's many layers and levels to this. And again, it's a national issue too.
Right. Does anybody else have anything to add?
I'll just add, Matt, I'm happy to help you with that, you know, if you need any assistance. But also, I think it's good that we have the diversity in the speakers tonight. I think that's more of kind of what needs to happen, not just here, but everywhere. Because I think it's enlightening on both sides to recognize what people are thinking on both sides and, you know, down the road, hopefully we can come together on some common ground where there's still mutual respect for one another, appreciation for one another, and especially as we talk about our young people in our schools, to make sure they feel valued and respected, no matter where they come from, no matter what they look like, no matter what sex they claim. I think that's the priority. So, so thank you all for coming and speaking tonight.
Okay, we've reached the part of closing comments. Mr. Miller, would you like to start?
No, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Logan? Mr. Pearl? Mrs. O'Connor?
Jimmy, congratulations on the good news. And that kind of work goes in into passing legislation. And I know how hard the advocacy effort is. Just thankful to have something. For those who don't know, our school funding formula has for many years been like a patchwork quilt. And one issue in one district puts a patch on it, the district in another issue puts a patch on it. I break the microphone. And it's become a very unwieldy and very unpredictable formula. And so this work for three years that Mrs. Logan has been engaged in is pretty incredible to make some inroads there, to coming out with a really clean way of looking at what does it cost to educate a student? And that's the basic question. It's student focused. And so this is exciting to see, really exciting to see. I just want to say thank you. I appreciate hearing from the different diverse voices tonight. And I always appreciate our community taking time to come out in person. You're investing in your community, you're student focused in your comments, and they were respectful and really appreciate that you all shared what you did. And I look forward to your emails, sir. Would like to hear what you have to say as well. That's it for me.
No, everything.
I only have one calendar change. We are not having a July meeting. We set our January, we set our meetings in January at organizational meetings and we pretty much adhere to them, but sometimes things come up in July of the month where we literally cannot find a date for Mr. Miller and Mrs. Logan and the board to have a meeting. So we are moving our July meeting to August and changing our August meeting. And it's going to be something new and different. It's going to be Thursday morning, August the 5th, at nine o'clock. Again, scheduling conflicts, Mr. Miller's gone a lot with conferences in July and August. It was the one date that we could all be here for. So August 5th at nine in the morning, Thursday.
That'll be in this building?
Yes. It'll be.
You kind of had the same reaction, just so you know.
We've never had a morning meeting, so it'll be interesting. Hopefully, I'm with you on that. Hopefully, it will be the last. And just a reminder, I will not. And Mr. Lovell will not be able to attend that meeting. So we have to go with majority. That is all I have, and we will notice that meeting. So Mrs. Logan will send a notice. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Soon.
Second.
Mrs. Logan, would you please call the roll? Mrs. O'Connor? Yes. Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes. Have a good evening, everyone.